Call a meeting to order. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? And I don't know if you see that there was in addition to add an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements after.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review of the minutes from December 27th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open public comment. Is there anybody that has any comments?
Do we say our stuff about the declaration of inclusion to that section?
I would, yes. Yeah.
Then I have some comments regarding the Pleasant Street.
Yep, we have you on the agenda after. Yep. You'll be under guests.
Is there an agenda that's available to pass out?
Here, Mr. Panagini.
All right, no open public comment? We move to guests, and we have four guests speaking tonight, so I'm pretty much going to limit everybody to five minutes so that we don't get bogged down. The first one is Jeff Schuman, Doug Perkins, from Otter Creek Watershed.
Hi, I'm Doug Perkins. I'm going to give a brief introduction of myself. Jeff will introduce himself, and then I'm going to ask you if you have any questions or concerns about how things are going with the Insect Control District.
Okay, do you mind coming to the podium? That way you can be seen.
That way you can hear me, right?
And heard.
Exactly. Hear you. Anyways, I'm a native from water. Fourth generation. Went to Bronson High School many, many, many years ago. After college over in New Hampshire, joined the Coast Guard. Was a Coast Guard officer for 22 years. Surface operations was my specialty. That was after my wife said, you know, you really probably should get a real job after college. To those being a street patrolman up in Killington at that point. Any case, left the Coast Guard, retired from them. They went to work for a series of contractors who had contracts with the Coast Guard. Surprise, surprise. After that got old back in 2008, I had a very strong desire to go back to Vermont, so we did, bought property up in Lester on Burn Lake. Spent eight years building a house up there, and that's where my wife now is now. I am the most junior member of the water trustees for the insect control district, which is why I'm the new chair. Any case, that's my background. Jeff?
Hi, Jeff. Thank you very much tonight. I'm Jeff Schuman. I live in Zollary. I moved there in 2017 officially after retiring from a 37-year career in public education in Connecticut. Seventeen as a teacher, twenty as a school administrator, thirteen as superintendent. In my part-time need to find something to do, I got involved with the insect control district. I'm the president of the lake association, and I'm a volunteer on the children's cheer隊. And it's keeping me pretty busy. In terms of being on the lake, my wife's family--
Recording in progress.
My wife's family's been on the lake since 1950. We were looking at the purchase of a stall camp in 87, and we built retirement home in 2007. Finally retired in 17, now we live there.
So the real reason we're here tonight is to hear your questions and concerns about how things are going with the insect control district. I'm here to listen.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
Any of the residents in town I talk with are-- 99% of them are pretty happy with, you know, what you guys do. I am certainly very happy.
Compared to what we went through years ago and what have you, it's--
With the river right through town, we have our share of wetlands. So thank you.
Yeah, Will's doing a great job as far as--
Yes.
Doing the scheduling and letting us know what's going on and what have you.
That is a big thing with our residency. They do like to know when the truck's coming around.
Okay, good. So a question back to you then. We've heard rumors that you're thinking about maybe joining the district officially, not just on a contract basis, which is what your current status is. What's the status of that rumor? True, false? Where are you with that decision?
Until things settle down, I don't think anything's going to-- you know, we're certainly not interested in--
Yeah, we haven't talked about it.
I think it was mainly my interest to finding out, you know, about the process if down the road we wanted to. But I think right at the moment, we're-- if you consider us-- you know, we're really happy with what you're doing, so.
And we're not dissatisfied in any way with the relationship. It would take one minute to tell you the process that you need to go through under Vermont state law. If you do decide you want to join the district, the first thing is you have to properly warn and have the citizens of the town vote on whether to join the district. Once, if that vote happens and it's affirmative, then the water trustees of the district have to vote to accept you. That's probably pretty pro forma. But then, the other towns who are already members, two-thirds of them have to vote to accept you. What it really hinges on for us along those ways is how much your annual assessment would be and whether that number is acceptable to the town. And because the district owns quite a bit of a profitable plant, there's a buy-in that has to be calculated and then made known to you, so again, you can warn that number. That with Pittsburgh, we just completed the buy-in on-- it was $17,000 five years a year, but those numbers are probably not accurate because they're five years old. And it was over the course of five years. So we would expect the buy-in to take place over five years. But as soon as you vote to become a member of the district and are accepted by the other towns, then your two representatives become voting members of the board, and with all the rights and privileges there on the two particular--
So you're saying that $17,000 covers a five-year period?
That $17,000 was each year.
Each year for five years? Okay.
And that was for the buy-in. And then the annual assessment would be however that is worked out. There is an algorithm that has been used for ever to do those calculations. One of the things I intend to do as chair this year is to bring up that algorithm and see if we're still happy with it or not. And if not, what the board wants to do about that.
All right, so we can basically just maintain the status that we're at right now for--
You can maintain the status you're at right now until you decide to do something different.
Okay.
And now you know the process for doing something different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming. You're welcome to stay.
Take care, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa Wright. Equalization study. Am I okay to take off my mask so you can hear me? And I'll stay right here and we're moving business. Michael, I have six or seven copies, seven maybe, I may have ten. And that's just kind of the summary of what we're going to talk about. That way if it's way too much appraisal detail and it goes zoom right over your heads, you can refer back to that and/or certainly come to me individually or as a group if you want a little understanding, which you may or may not. So what I'm here to talk about is the 2021 equalization study that came out as our Christmas gift for PBR. Right after it, it came out literally the day after Christmas, which oddly enough was a Sunday, and yet we still got on that Sunday. So we're not doing too badly in Proctor. So in summary, our CLA is 95.25%, which is down from 99.87% last year. This CLA for 2021 is what will be used as one of the drivers in your tax rate for 2022. So it's a process that is buffered somewhat because it's three years of sales, and it's really almost four years-- it is four years old, but some of the sales aren't by the time they're implemented in that tax rate. So for 2022, the CLA is based on sales from Form 1 of 2018 to 331 of 2021. So everybody's probably aware of the, you know, increasing sale prices and the way the market has really trended upward in the last year or more. So those three years kind of buffers that. So we're going to see more of the effects of that with every year that those older sales drop off. I'm still seeing that trend in the sales coming in since April 1st of 2021. As a bank appraiser, I'm not seeing really any slowdown in that side of the business. So, you know, the market cooling we talked about in the fall doesn't seem to be hitting us here in Proctor. So the other measure that is part of this is the COD. And a CLA of under 85% or over 115% will result in order from the state to reappraise. But the COD can also be a factor. Proctor's 2021 COD is 12.59%, which is up from 8.46%. You would anticipate it's climbing with increasing sales because that increase in the market doesn't hit all properties equally. So some are more under assessed than others. A few here and there are still coming in, selling it less than we have them assessed for. And that just happens when you get a few years out for a reappraisal. People renovate things. We don't know about that. The market changes, all of that. So we are still within the state's parameters, but it is in part due to the impact of our appraisals for the utility properties that we are within that. To understand this better, the fourth paragraph of this explains how the study works. And it starts with the two-page letter that you receive. It's an overall summary. And then you drill down to the next report, which is the certified-- what do they call it? The certified final computation sheet, which is the summary of each category. So if you turn to that-- I don't know if the second document is only a two-page document. It might be the second page in there, or it might even be the last, the third or the last, depending on how--
The certified final computation?
Certified final computation.
First sheet in your package, shouldn't it?
Yeah, so back to-- if you look at those numbers under the applied ratio-- and sorry, I don't have copies for everyone, but certainly this is all public information. It's going to be clean on the website if people are interested. Yeah, yeah. And it's actually all public record. You can go on the state's website. You can compare different counts if anyone has any desire to do that.
It's pretty heady stuff.
It is. Well, with these market changes, if you like statistics, it's kind of interesting. So what is kind of interesting about Proctor? If you look at that applied ratio on that summary, our final computation sheet, our utility ratio is 145.26. If you look at all the other numbers, they're pretty consistent, which is good. That means that we have actually fairly decent equity of our appraisals. But they're in the high 80s, just below 90. So if the utilities were equalized at 100%, we'd be below 90. So we're getting closer to that 85. So I don't think we have to worry about an order anytime soon, but I think it's important to understand that how the state is dealing with the equalization of those utilities kind of throws these numbers off. So overall, my opinion is that we're more like 88, 89% on average for all of our other properties in town. So if something changes with the ultimate settlement of the GMP case or the-- and/or the future assessment of the GMP property, or finally, potential changes in how the state manages utility assessment, which is on the table. There's-- I've been working with that as president of the Vermont Assessors and Listers Association with an act from the legislature asking PBR to come up with a proposal to improve upon the inventory system for utility reporting. That's probably a few years out, but it may well happen. So that may change things. And if and when that should happen, we'd be back to a much lower CLA. So bottom line, we know we're under assessing properties. We had an appraisal in 2017, which arguably might have been a little low, but market conditions were different in 2017, and they were using the last three years of sales. Right now, if you went out to bid for a reappraisal, you wouldn't get any sooner than 2025 in any case. So it might be something to put on your radar. Maybe not this year, but in the next few years to consider bidding for three or four years out because that lead time is likely to maybe even get worse. Where people are going to be-- there just aren't that many appraisal contractors out there. People may be bidding four and five years out, which will give you some time to save the money in your reappraisal fund for that next reappraisal. But something to think about. It's a little down the road, I think. There are other towns that are going to be under order well before Proctor is. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I didn't hear you mention anything about the effects of inflation. It's crazy inflation we're having on the market.
Well, I think that-- you mean inflation overall?
A dollar meaning worth a lot less now, and things being much more costly. And how that's going to affect things.
That's all part of the factors in the real estate market. But in addition to that, you know, I have a lot of listeners and assessors in the state that want to blame all the increases in the real estate market on COVID. And I think that's overly simplistic. I mean, it's a factor. It's definitely a factor. I mean, hey, if I'd been trapped in a New York City apartment during COVID, I would have been planning my escape, and I would have bought some property in New England or somewhere, or Vermont specifically. So there's that. There's also, you know, we're kind of seen as a climate refugee state, if you will, where we have people coming from other parts of the country where--
We are the number one in the country right now.
I know. Glenn isn't going to kick in because I came here 10 years ago thinking it's going to get warm.
No, that is what I mean. I'm meaning to say our impacts are much less. We're a much more moderate climate. We're a more--
Excuse me?
We're a more scalable economy. Well, today-- I don't think she's talking weather, climate.
After the next week, we're going to have a lot of flatlanders going home. I'll tell you that.
Possibly. So just to get back on track, as far as the assessments, I don't think there'd be that big of a variance in terms of assessment versus value when they were sold because of COVID. I think COVID definitely raised prices up, and prices were much higher than the assessed value. So I think there's a bigger margin because of COVID, I think. Not only here, everywhere. It's a factor, and one of the things that kind of an indirect cause is COVID led to more people working remotely. So I'm hearing that from a lot of people in the market that they're able to move up here and keep their higher-paying Boston or Connecticut job and commute there once a month or once a week. Right, right. And live here full-time. So that changes-- changes a lot of things for people.
I could just add one thing. I talked to Betsy Franz the other day, and she just mentioned that the market's kind of like slowing down now because there's nothing available and anything-- something turns up on the market, it goes instantly. It still does. People are still buying. And so she says that a lot of people are just giving up because there's nothing they can be found and whatnot. So it's kind of--
Yeah, it's pretty diluted.
It's still super fast, but the interest seems decent.
I've heard that as well. That would run you out of inventory, yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No? All right. That was very thorough. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa.
If you need more information going forward, you know where to find me. All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Take care, thanks.
Stay informed, everybody.
You too.
All right. Lisa Mizer.
So you have the application in front of you, and the request is to apply under the town to go to Watermark, which applications are due at the end of the month.
That's a nice project. Thank you, Lisa. Certainly, I approve of that wholeheartedly. Thank you.
So you need a motion, right, for us? For you to go to Watermark?
Well, several years ago, the board took action. And so a letter from the select board needs to accompany the application to Watermark for Michael. I mean, whatever applications are going in. I know that we were trying to find. So historically, the town manager writes a letter telling us all of the applications that are being applied for under the town, that they're approved by the select board, so.
All right. Somebody approves of this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Panagini. You're up next.
My name is Mark Gordon Panagini. I'm the owner of 16 Pleasant Street. I have 40 years of experience in the sewer and excavation industry. And Michael brought to my attention that the town wanted to replace the sewer line. So I was able to look at the plans that engineers had started. There's a serious problem with this project. The original sewer line-- and I have pictures of this-- was put in in 1896. The original manhole is there on the property. That manhole was replaced in the 1950s. The conditions were so adverse, they left the old manhole there on the property, just laying there because they didn't have the equipment in the 1950s to get it out of the four-foot-deep muck that's down in that area. My property, which is in the middle of two sewer lines coming from Pleasant Street, down off a cliff. Now, when I say cliff, talking about a difference of elevation of approximately 60 feet. That goes through the marsh, through the wetlands, to this manhole in question. Then it goes underneath a 60-foot bank, which is the railroad. That railroad was built just prior to 1863 for Proctor Marble. And the complete base of that, as I'm told and I've seen pictures, is the rubble from the Washington Monument, the Jefferson Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial. That whole rail section was built with slag from Vermont Marble to build these huge banks that travel through the rock. And we've looked and documented it. The problem is with this is that the area of 16 Pleasant Street and the surrounding area is basically a large bed. Everything from the hill and back of it, side of it, all sits in this lower area and then is drained by a box culvert. Now, a box culvert, when they were building the railroad, is just a square box. And I have a picture that I can pass around here. This box culvert, which is not legal in today's standards. There's the box culvert. That travels approximately 600 feet underground, under the railroad. And that's the only thing that drains over 100 acres of property. The only thing. So the problem with the sewer line that they're having, which the engineer has not addressed, is that when it rains, the water comes up, goes into the manhole, and then overflows your sewer line. Now, yes, there are some breaks in the sewer line because of the extensive drop and the amount of fill that was used at 16 Pleasant Street by the original builder. So the pipe is separated in different places. We're sure underground. Michael has told me there's film. They have not supplied film or prints. The engineer has not supplied prints. Because Michael has not been forthcoming with the required information, I have gotten the state involved. I've gotten inland wetlands involved. I've gotten Army Corps of Engineers involved. Got into Historical Society involved. She's still away. And it's all because the communication channels were not opened. There are-- there's a town road manager who would be aware that there's three large culverts that exit onto this property.
So have you reached out to the engineers yourself?
I have.
And they've provided you with no information?
None. Five phone calls documented. This-- the sewer line that's in question is underneath this. This is a major drainage area right behind 16 Pleasant.
So I'm just going to say, just in the essence of time, so exactly what is it--
I'm not timing you, sir.
So exactly--
He finds everybody else.
Exactly what is it you're asking? And what is it that you're refuting in terms of what the engineers are doing?
What I would like to see happen, because all this stuff is very antique and nothing was done in the day, 1896 or the 1950s, to look at alternatives to just replacing what's there. There really is no reason to replace what's there. It could easily go down Pleasant Street, under the railroad bridge, and out to whatever that road is below.
That would require a pump station installation.
Not necessarily.
According to the engineers.
Right. And that's a lot more costly. So I don't think that--
You know, the thing is, if this is going to be a serious problem for the town in the future, meaning this fix what they're planning, unless they put the manhole 10 feet high and the water can't go in, if that box culvert ever fails, which is not on the engineer's prints or the three culverts draining into this area or the 100 acres of natural springs, that who was the other town manager that lived right up the road? I had you go up to that property.
Oh, you were talking about, I think, a select board member.
Right.
I'm not sure. I don't think we got to the bottom of who it was.
Okay, well, there's a spring that travels continuously. The state now has that water course listed as an actual river. So any project that gets done there has to get a river project authorization, which is very difficult to get. And I can give you his name. They are on top of this. They are not happy.
We got it. DEC gave us some language today like they were going to approve the stream alteration permit.
Right.
That was kind of above and beyond just going out to get. So we think that's--
This is a picture. This shows the stream running right through the manhole.
So from my understanding, based on-- I mean, and part of the data that you've been talking about, all this historical stuff, is the need to do this job? And--
There's no question about it. It needs to be done.
Correct. So I guess my question is that you just don't want to provide an easement for them? You don't want them coming onto your property and doing the work that they need to do?
No, I gave Michael a list of four things possibly that needed to be done for me to authorize the project near my property. And I know we're going over time now, but things like riprap at the exits of the existing culverts. A guarantee that any trees that die over the next five years after the project is completed. And we're talking 150-year-old trees that they're going to take down. You don't just replace 150-year-old trees-- You don't just replace 150-year-old tree, right? But they're gonna take these trees down, they're gonna clear cut from the end of my living room window to the railroad track. Clear cut it. Because you don't dig through this marsh without huge equipment. And then, of course, the railroad, which runs three times a day by the property, is now gonna be in my living room.
Well, I think that they would replace trees for screening.
Great. I'm glad to hear you say that.
So Mr. Pangini would like me to write him a letter, and he listed three things before he left. He wanted hydrological analysis with the riprap. He wanted tree planting, and he wanted a project timeline.
Only for where it is with 16 Pleasant Street. Meaning if they say they're gonna dig it up for 90 days, and after that, the equipment's gonna be gone, that would be fine.
The tricky part about drafting that letter is I can't guarantee any of those things for him. One, the trees that are being lost are not on his property, so I can't promise him that we're gonna do something off of his property. Two, the project hasn't been out to bid yet, so we don't have a, we're still in the permitting phase, so we don't even have a project timeline to give him now. And then the third is, it's a sewer project, so there's no need for a hydrological report. If this were a stormwater project, it would.
Excuse me, because it travels within a river?
And we got a stream alteration permit.
You did not get a stream alteration permit.
Well, it's in the process and we got language.
It's long from process. It hasn't even started.
There really is no river. They're rushing through it.
Ma'am, what's your name?
Judy.
Judy? Ma'am, Judy, it is a river. There are fish in it, okay? You can say yes, or smile, or whatever you wanna do, but it's a river.
Okay, so I guess-
And when the state says it's a river, it's a river. And Joshua Cagni has written me a letter stating that it's a river. It's a river. It flows year-round. It's a-
I guess that's not my definition of a river. It looks more like a stream. But anyway, so as far as the easement goes, and trees, I mean, I don't see how you can demand trees when they're not even on your property, so that I would think would be your bordering property owners or the people that live next to your property. Them dealing with the engineers and what's gonna be done, so.
Do you live near a railroad, ma'am?
Pretty close.
Good. Are the trees between you and the railroad?
Some woods.
Let me tell you, that protection is very important.
Oh, I know. And I think the people who own those trees, not being you, are dealing with them to try to rectify that issue, because I'm sure they have the same concerns as you do.
Right.
So.
And if you do this project and a 150-year-old tree falls down on my house two years later, I want it documented that I'm here today saying that the town knew about it and they did it anyway.
Well, I think at this time, all we can do basically is, Michael works with the engineers, try to get the drawings, and basically, I think they're reputable. A reputable engineering firm, done lots of great work before. I think they've kind of studied this over and over.
No.
Pretty much. Yeah, they have. And they know what they're doing. So I think we'll just, you know, we'll discuss this. You can deal with Michael and try to get it rectified so that they can get the easement and they can start the project.
Well, they won't get an easement from me.
I believe there's already an easement on the property. Am I mistaken?
No. There is no easement on my property. When they subdivided the property, what the attorney failed to do was put those easements on the subdivided property. There are easements on the adjacent property, but they are not on 16 Pleasant.
We can just go back to the original law?
No, no, you can't.
A mistake is-
My attorney says they can't. And that, you know, I've discussed it with him. He says, "Mark, if it comes to them starting, you get in touch with me. I'll take care of it."
Well, I guess, you know, where else could it go, Mr. Pangini?
The sewer?
That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
I have no problem, as I've told Michael, with this project. The sewer, if you guys wanna put it in the same place, I absolutely have no problem with that.
Then what are we doing here tonight?
The fact that they won't discuss what they're gonna do as an as-built, I wanna know that the exits of the, you just saw the pictures, the exits of the culverts, three culverts, 24-inch diameter runs half full of water. It's a huge amount of water.
I think we could do a stormwater analysis one day there, but since it's just a sanitary sewer project, we're only doing sanitary sewer work. And again, Mark, I'm right here to work with you, and I've got the plan set here that you and I reviewed that one day.
I don't have it.
Well, yeah, but that will, for you, and I've even spoken to Tom Doty about this, because he's, you know, pretty involved in the project. I'll always have that plan set here if you wanna come take a look at it, like we did, you know, a couple of weeks-
As soon as it goes to bid, my company will bid on it and I'll get a set of plans. But let me tell you, for you not, as a resident of this town and somebody with my experience, not to say, "Hey, you know, would you look this over? You know, what are you gonna do with riprap?" You wanted to put a road down my property to get equipment down, and you have a neighbor who's cut all the trees down, you say, "Oh, we'll go down that way." That's not the way things operate, sir.
Well, that wasn't me.
It wasn't you?
No, I wasn't a part of that process during that time. And I think they moved the road because you didn't want it going through your property. Is that correct or no?
Well, I don't have any problem with the road. I have a problem with the way they're gonna leave the road after. The town recently did a water line project just below Pleasant Street. What's the name of that road? Covered Bridge Road?
Or?
Mar Road. There's 500 feet at the end of Pleasant Street if you take a left. And there's not much snow, so I invite you all to go take a look. The town dug up the side of the road, right? And then they backfilled with whatever they had. You know, they just threw whatever was there in big piles off the side of the road. That is not code in the state of Vermont. There's no grass growing there. There's no hay coverage. There's no silt protection. Nothing, right? And Michael says, "Oh, well, that looks fine." Well, that's not the way it's gonna look around my property. Just not gonna happen.
Okay, so-
So I thank you. I didn't wanna take up this much time.
Okay, so you just continued to work with Michael and-
He can get me that letter.
The engineers and try to-
The engineer can put it in some kind of things, that this is what it's gonna look like when we're done. Now, we're talking both sides of your house. So I wanna, when you guys think about this, think about a ditch, right? We're talking 25 feet deep just to get to that sewer line. Yes, sir. We're talking elevation, 25 feet down, right? Both sides of your house are gonna be dug up with this huge ditch. Equipment half the size of this building. I need some protection on what you're gonna leave after it's done and how long it's gonna take. Are they gonna be there 90 days on the property? What happens after that? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pangini. I'll continue to work with you. I don't think I'm gonna be able to get the letter, like I said, because I just don't have, it's just not possible at this time. But we will be in contact, I promise, as we get closer to the project start date.
Well, I think the engineer should be in touch with me on what-
Well, they've been working with me. We've agreed that they'll work with me and I'll work with you through them. So I'll play the middleman between the town's engineers and you.
So they've called you about my phone calls?
Correct.
Good. Well, that's, thank you for at least saying that somebody's responded. The main thing is what's gonna be done with the stormwater, not sewer water, stormwater, after this project? If a log falls in front of that box culvert, it'll wash out that sewer line like it wasn't even there.
Do you have one last comment, then we're moving on?
I'd like to ask one of the, I can understand where he's coming from. I think that if you got more information on exactly how things are gonna go, and plus, I think, trees is really important. Trees is really important. And that's something maybe you need to work with your neighbor, and maybe you can help work with your neighbor on that, because that sounds like it's very important. And also, it just seems like if you had more information and knew exactly and felt more assured about the changes that are coming, you would probably feel more comfortable.
There's no question. This is all been up to Michael. And I'm sorry, Michael, to say this, but you have been zero forthcoming.
Okay, I think we're finished now. Thank you, though. Thank you. No more comments. We're gonna move on. Thank you.
But I appreciate it.
I understand your, I understand your-
Yeah, thanks.
It's a major change for a whole community that was once called the Garden of Eden.
Okay, we're gonna move on now to good stuff. The skating rink opened, so I think that's great. They were able to make ice and had a lot of people attending the skating rink to skate, so I think that's great. Got donations from people past, you know, family members that have used it, and they wrote a nice letter and stuff, talked about that. So I think it's great. I think it's a great asset for this town. And I hope the weather continues so that they, I don't like the cold, but, so that they can make ice still, so. So that's a good thing. Anything else? Anybody have? All right, Highway Department.
So we've invited VHB, and I'm not sure if DeBois and King is here, DeBois and King are here, but we're gonna talk a little bit about the shared use path and the soil samples that were taken.
Okay.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I'm Jeff Bakayaki. I'm with VHB, and I've been working with Michael on the Beaver Pond shared use path. And Michael asked me to join you all today to talk about a quick project update, what's going on, and specifically talk a little bit about some of the soil sampling that we've been doing as part of the project. From a schedule perspective, just to give you a quick overview of where we're at, we have completed what we call our conceptual design. And the conceptual design is really just a rough layout of where we wanna put the path. And then, what happens is the project goes into this permitting phase where it gets, you know, bundled up as a document to review all the permitting relative to the project. So we call this like the NEPA phase. And in the NEPA phase, we basically, you know, assess a lot of different environmental, cultural, historic impacts for the project, and then bundle up this document called a categorical exclusion document, which basically says, you know, we're stating to FHWA, the feds, and DTRAN, that, you know, this project is subject to this, the National Environmental Policy Act as a categorical exclusion. So what that means is, we're saying this project is basically excluded from a lot of the overall permitting based on its type. That whole process takes a good amount of time for the state in Montpelier to digest and package up and author this letter where they say, "Yeah, it's a, you know, this project is a categorical exclusion." And we've been, we kind of started the clock on what we call, it's really like a six-month process. We started the clock on that this fall. And in the meantime, we use that time, we've got kind of this six-month waiting period to hopefully get the project pushed through the NEPA process. But in the meantime, we did some of the soil investigation that we've been planning to do for this project in parallel to that, so that when, you know, when the NEPA process is over and we can start moving on and getting this project into, you know, towards final design and construction, we have a better understanding of what kind of soils we're dealing with when we start digging on site for the shared use path. The reason we need to do this and why it's important is because we know the history of the project location. Here, this is, you know, an old rail corridor, and so there's a historical reason to believe that some of the soil that we'll be excavating for the path could have some contaminants to it. This is especially important, obviously, for health and safety for the construction workers working on the project, but also for the town's liability. You know, if you think about what we do, if we pull soil from one parcel and then the contractor brings it somewhere else and they have no information on the, you know, level of contamination, there's some inherent, like, town liability there, because it's a town project that, you know, there could be, you know, some legal issues down the line about, you know, what we did with that soil and where it went. So what we do is we prepare these soil investigation plans to sample soil along the project corridor. And we do this strategically so that we really only wanna sample soil that we know needs to be taken off-site, right? If we're gonna be, you know, bringing in a lot of material to build the path up, there's no point of digging up the dirt on that site where we know we're not gonna take dirt off-site anyway. But we developed this plan that said, "Let's pick soil here, here, and here because we know, you know, there's some contaminant possibility, and we know we have to take this soil off-site at the end of the project." So we developed that work plan, and then we executed that work plan in November this year. And it amounted to basically seven soil samples along the corridor. There were seven samples, six of them were, occurred basically near Beaver Pond. So if you know the, Michael, you said you had distributed the figure for the map. Is that true?
I did. I distributed the last cost estimates that you sent me.
Sorry, what was that?
Vic, are you talking about the cost estimates, the updated, are you talking about the updated cost estimates?
Oh, no, I thought you said you had distributed the figure, site plan map.
Oh, well, I did give them the map, too.
Great, yeah. So if you guys look at the map, it actually shows you where all of the seven samples occurred. On the west side of page, you can see Beaver Pond, and there are six samples taken along that corridor. And then the seventh sample was actually taken over on the far end. We started the project near Electric Avenue, just as we kind of tie into the town we're in here. And you'll notice we had no samples taken on several other parts of the project. There's no samples taken on the property owned by Procter Gas, the property owned by Frank Bayett, and the property owned by Atumia. And this was strategic, because we knew we weren't going to have any soil to take off-site on these parcels. So while we know there's like a concern for, you know, the potential for some mild contaminants, we weren't gonna have to take soil off-site. So by omitting the sampling in those areas, it actually is a good way to save us some money and not have to spend as much on a detailed sampling plan if we know we can just leave the soil on the site. However, over by Beaver Pond, we, you know, we're so close to the pond there. We have to bring in new material for the trail itself. So that means all that excavation, we really can't build the path up and then spread the dirt around, because we're right inside, right in the pond. So we just, we knew we had to get rid of that soil and wanted to look at it. And lo and behold, our sampling did result in some mild contamination. The good news is, it wasn't anything horrible, but it still, the contamination level still triggered what the DEC would consider impacted soil. And what it means is that you'd have to develop what's called a soil management plan that basically clearly specifies to the contractor which soils are impacted and how they need to be handled. And it also allows us to basically come up with a better cost estimate to what it's gonna cost to remove contaminated soil. In the past, when I've spoken to the select board, we've talked about some of the costs of this project. And one of the big ones is the disposal of contaminated material isn't covered by the grant that this project falls under. A lot of the construction costs for the project fall under a grant where the town only pays a 20% share. However, disposal of contaminated material is not considered grant-eligible, which means the town will pay 100% of that. In previous cost estimates, we've tried to estimate what that dollar value was going to be based on what we knew about the site and what we suspected needed to be removed. And the results of this investigation do actually give us a lot more light on what we're dealing with. So in some ways, it's not great news that we did find some contaminants, but the good news is we were actually able to hone in on exactly, you know, how much soil we think we're gonna deal with and give a better estimate to what that cost would be to the town. And what we found was, we came up with like 180 tons of material that would need to be treated specially, and at about $75 a ton, which is basically from our experience, we've seen landfills accept, you know, this kind of what they call turn-of-the-daily cover. But puts the total non-participating project costs from the town in like a $13,000 range, 13 and a half, whereas our original estimate was like $45,000. Michael, you said that they had a copy of the latest estimate, so I guess to clarify, it's what I'm talking about.
On the bottom of page two, it's $57,500.
Right. So that number, those two items that fall under that number, the non-participation costs, there's two items listed there. One of them is the removal of railroad ties? And that's an object that couldn't, you know, obviously changed through this investigation.
At the beginning of the project, we were told no railroad ties would be removed. They would be filled over.
Sorry, when was that?
At the beginning of this project, we were told no railroad ties would be removed. They would be filled over.
I see.
Why did that change and when?
I mean, I don't, I don't recall when that decision was made. I do remember in early conceptual design with D-Trans, we were told that they had to be removed when we were early discussing this with D-Trans. I'm not sure if something had been said early in the scoping process or before we developed our conceptual design, but the feedback we got from D-Trans is that they had to be removed.
So the money not covered under the grant would be $57,500?
Uh, that was our previous estimate. So the number I want you to focus on here, I guess, is of those two, of the removal of railroad ties and then the second number, so the removal of railroad ties is listed as $10,500, and then the second number under that category is the management and disposal of contaminated soils. This was previously estimated at 47,000, and that was based on, that was before we were able to do our investigation that we're talking about tonight. We've changed that, you know, our estimate would be basically updated from 47,000 down to 13,500. So it's a, you know, total cost of this category of about $24,000, down from 57. And that's, that's a couple of different numbers in the air at the same time, but is that enough clear? Like, the railroad tie number really doesn't change following this investigation, but we are in, coming on that management and disposal of soil number by learning what soils we have to deal with. And this one, we're basically saying the total cost of those two combined is about 24,000.
So bottom line, we had originally estimated it would be 57,500, and instead it's gonna be 24,000.
That's right.
That's your estimate, though, correct?
Yep. Yeah, and that's based on the recent evaluation that we just completed, so it's real good information. You know, we were really making a lot of assumptions before, we came up with that $57,000.
And does that include the soil plan, soil management plan that we talked about?
No, they say the soil management plan is gonna be an additional $3,000 to $5,000.
So that's on top of the 24,000.
Yeah, so it's gonna be 29,000 versus 57,000.
And how many railroad ties are there?
They're estimating 240.
420, yeah. Yeah, so the downside here is that because we did hit some soils that exceeded the state's threshold, they do, they do want us to push for a soil management plan. To put it in perspective, though, soil management plan is kind of a big term in our industry, and, you know, we know that the, you know, level of contamination really affects the level of effort that goes into a soil management plan. So I think in the grand scheme of things, we're actually like a lower cost soil management plan than what it could be, and we're pretty hopeful that we can do this pretty streamlined. But we also want to just point out that, you know, that soil management plan is subject to grant-eligible funds, so that's the, you know, you really only pay the 20% match from the total cost of those additional fees.
So did you say earlier that some of the soil that's contaminated can actually be treated rather than disposed of?
Uh, not, no, I didn't say treated, no, but we do know that a lot of the soil that we may suspect to have some of these incidences on different parts of the project could be left on-site.
Okay.
Because they don't need to be removed, just for the geometry of the project, right? We build the path up high so we don't have to cut, and that way we can keep those soils on-site.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
As of today, how much have we spent on this project?
From, from VHB's side, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I think we're at like... No, I won't speak out of turn, give me one second, I'll bring it up.
How far are we away from putting a shovel in the ground?
Total spending to date... Right about $80,000 total?
Eighty.
So that's all grant-eligible costs, so take 20% of that is what the town has spent on the project so far. About 16?
That's, that sounds about right, Jeff. I was looking at the latest reimbursement package, and I think it was around that number.
How far would you estimate we're from putting a shovel in the ground?
Do you have a question?
A year, two years?
I wanna, I wanna say it's, it's probably in the two-year range more than the one-year range. Like, it's certainly not a 2023 project. I wanna say we're scheduled for 2024 construction. Does that sound right, Michael?
Yeah, I think that's what we, I think that's what we talked about last time you were here. And just the category exclusion is a year on itself, right? Or no? Just that review?
That review is, is a good six months, and we're, we're already underway with it, which is good news. So we're scheduled to wrap that up in March, and then we can jump right into, you know, preliminary and final design, which is gonna go a lot faster. Really, the next big hurdle from a schedule perspective is gonna be right-of-way acquisition. You know, this project occurs over several private properties, and, you know, negotiating with property owners for the easements that the town will need. Usually, when we develop project schedules, we tend to put a lot of time in for that, because you really don't want to go out to bid, you know, with a contractor until you have all of your right-of-ways secured for the project. And there's a big risk of mobilizing a contractor when you don't have the rights to be out there. So often, the schedule involves a fair amount of time for the right-of-way acquisition, which we don't do until after we finish the categorical exclusion document.
Our Pleasant Street Sewer Project will start it after this and will be completed before this. And that's certainly a major project. This is a bike path.
I think it's not going through Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
I've, I've had very soft conversations with Judy Taranovich over the last couple weeks about it, too. So we're, I'm just kind of prepping for when we start engaging them a little bit more in this process, and we get to the easement phase, so I've started it.
Well, Stan has dealt with all the landowners.
Yeah, I figured.
It was certainly not an issue.
Okay.
You know, Frank is, we have moved the path to accommodate his concerns. Judy was on board from day one. Yeah. That's pretty much it. You know, right-of-way should be...
Yeah, and then Omnia, I think, is the last stakeholder there for the side of the path that we need to coordinate with. But, yeah, and I agree, I think we've had a lot of early coordination, and I think, you know, we could be a little more expeditious through the right-of-way phase, everything moves well. But right now, our schedule includes, you know, it's a good six, I'm just looking at this schedule now, we've got this coming June to December for the right-of-way phase, you know, we really get our act together here and get, you know, going, we can, you know, maybe speed things up by getting ahead of that, right? And start, you know, talking to these folks now. I can tell you right now, you know, you said it really well, it's a path project, right? This isn't complicated. You know, once we can get past categorical exclusion, you know, we can really run, this is something that we can lift up, it's just kind of a lot of tough schedule hurdles to clear in this project. You know, I know you guys are all frustrated with the time and money that it's taken, and believe me, we are too. Like, we're, we really want to get this one going.
We picked the wrong firm.
I feel like they're being helpful.
Unfortunately.
Does anybody have any other comments, questions?
I've been watching this go on, and I feel like it's been kind of jinxed since we didn't get the land used right-of-way, and since things have changed, it just seems like, I feel like, I've been watching this company, and it's just, I just, it seems like everything's murky and the costs keep changing, and it's always like, they're saving money, you're saving money, but I keep seeing these figures go up, and I'm, I think that there's a lot probably still on account before it's gonna pop out of the woodwork. And I can't help but feel like this firm is handling things and being upfront and boop, boop, boop along with the ballers, everything's so murky. I'm really, it just feels like this project's been jinxed, and I don't think that this firm has done anything to help that out, and sitting there watching this, and I'm watching, and I'm worried to speak up, because it's, you know, the town's money that they're spending on this, and I appreciate what they're trying to do, and I have a lot of appreciation for Dale Christie and the Beaver Park Commission and everything that's going on. But with this project and these people handling it, I think it's just money suck, and nothing's getting done, and we're just looking in the future, more money, more money. And I know that we're getting a grant and how everything is, but I would please us to reconsider maybe just rethinking this one out and maybe just, like, cutting losses.
We wouldn't be cutting losses, we'd be responsible for the entire amount.
Yeah.
So we'd have to pay $80,000, because we'd no longer be eligible for the grant.
Well, how much further are we gonna go to, like, keep spending so we save money so we don't spend money?
Well, I think, listening to tonight, it's been reduced from what they did, you know, project out there, the costs have been reduced. So we're paying less than we initially thought we were going to. And if you're, if, and anytime you want to build or do a project in Vermont, you know what you're up against.
I understand.
It's probably one of the hardest places to do anything because of the restrictions and the regulations and the guidelines. So, I mean, in their defense, I'm just saying, a lot of times you don't know these things until you start digging and start doing things, and then, just like with the town office, you know...
I think they lack professionalism, I mean, I, I, they're not, I haven't done anything, it's just like, it's just, it hasn't been, that's what, basically them deal with you instead of, like, answering to you, the people spending the money and being courteous and frank and straightforward with everything that's going on, it just seems all murky, and it just seems like costs are murky. I would like to see, if we go on, I would like to see him put these figures he's talking about in writing, guarantee it, have some type of guarantee come through, what is it gonna cost, and it's not gonna cost you anymore, and that's gonna be it, and if they, they should be able to do that at this point, because this is just, this is just an area.
We're not at that point that they know, you know, the contract hasn't gone out until we get all this stuff going, until there's a contractor there, there's, there's no guarantee. You're dealing with a number of state agencies on this, and this is the way it is. We selected both of these two firms, and we, we looked at three or four firms.
We took the low bidder.
Yeah, well, you know, you know, we've dealt with DuBois and King for a number of years on projects.
Great firm, yes, did excellent work, yeah.
So...
This isn't it. And it just, it's amazing how the estimated cost of the contamination removal was high, the board complained, a miracle happened, and now the prices are lowered. I, I don't believe, I believe they'll be back to the original estimates when we're done.
I understand why that feels the way that you're saying, I, I know what you're saying, and I want you to know, we're not, we're not changing prices to appease the board, that's absolutely not true. We, you know, we made assumptions early on, we tried our best to focus on the areas where we knew where we would be dealing with dirt that had to be taken off-site, and we, you know, performed a, I know, a sampling analysis that, that made sense to us, and these are the, these are the, you know, the volumes of soil that came back as dirty and what we expected them to cost to be removed. I, I know how that looks, and I really want you to know, that's not, that's not our approach here whatsoever.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay.
Jeff, I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so there's nothing really, because Celia's not here, so...
Nothing other in the water than...
Well, we're gonna invite Celia to talk about the agreements, but she's on vacation with her, with, spending time with her grandson, so we can just try to get her again next.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Is there a motion to go out of Water Commissioners into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A Willow Sewer Project update.
So we've already spent a good bit of time on it already, so I'll just say that there was, there was an easement on One Goran Bridge Road that I was able to secure, so that was done. And again, I've been working with the engineers very closely on this because they, they are motivated to move things along. And so to kind of appease some of the surrounding landowners, they got a wetland delineation and also went up for a stream alteration permit, and it, it, it isn't finalized yet, but we should see here in the next couple of days that that stream permit will be afforded to us, so. So that's, that's the Willow Street Project update.
Is there a motion to go back to the regular Board Select Board meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Managers' Report.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, this is my Managers' Report. To start off the town report, the Treasurer's Office and I have completed all the financial reports, births, deaths, appointed officials list, dedication page, and we've also received the FY '21 budget. So this week, staff will be focused on assembling the, the report and drafting the warning, hopefully, and sending the draft off to Repro by the end of the month. It'd be really cool if we got it done early.
I owe you a couple of reports, too.
Yeah, we have a couple more reports due.
Maybe at least I do one of my reports.
I'm a good tracker, very well.
So, um, we had our Assistant Assessor interview, the Town Clerk and the Lister, and myself met with Karen Folger, who appears to be qualified for the position. I plan on writing up a job description and have her sign it this week, and then, you know, her pay rate will be set at $26 an hour, and she'll be considered part-time. And I had a conversation with her about the Lister's budget and, you know, what, kind of what we were paying Jake, who was here before her, and it sounds like we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be right on, if not below, budget for her, so no worry there.
Right.
We got the new flags up over at Main Street Park, I got a little FaceTime in with, with PW Foreman, I thanked John Corus for helping me put those up, and I think they look pretty good.
They do, and they are a little bigger.
They're a little bigger, and I, I thought they were bigger than they were, but...
They look good.
Yeah, I think they look good. Gotta be careful not to cut your hand on that thing.
That, I'm amazed they left it that way from the factory.
Hey, good, you know, go ahead and just move it down a little bit.
Yeah.
All right.
It's kind of for cheap.
Yeah. The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Meeting, this is a reminder to the LHMP Development Team, that, that the LHMP Development Team will meet here on January 19th to hold an in-house technical meeting. We will then meet again on January 25th at 5:30 with Stephanie to include our findings into the working draft.
It's gonna be lots of fun if anybody wants to come.
Yeah.
You can busy those days.
Also, the surplus memo, I was told that you all get this every year. I had the spreadsheet and, and got it all figured out after Stan even left, so I've got an idea. I've got my mind wrapped around on how it's, how the formula is done.
Good, as I know.
So, after working with Stan, you will see that the June 30, 2020 Audit Report shows a year-end balance of $195,927. Of this amount, $47,332 is restricted for highway expenditures. Subtracting the highway fund and the voter-approved transfer of $62,211 to the Town Hall Sinking Fund leaves a surplus of $82,384. This amount is well below the 10% of the next year's expenditure budget recommended by our auditors for cash on hand.
Awesome. Thank you.
Excellent.
Legal services request for proposals agreements, legal service agreements have been formally executed with both Weber, Chapman, and Cupfer, as well as Carol Bopel and Kite. I've already used Carol Bopel and Kite once, and they seem super professional, and I think it was a, I think they're gonna be a good resource for us.
They're from Middlebury.
Yeah, they're the ones from Middlebury. Four Winds Program Facility Use Agreement, this is just for transparency reasons, because you asked me to do it, and just for a little while, while I'm still wet behind the ears, I just want you to see that I'm doing it. while, while I'm still wet behind the ears, I just want you to see that I'm doing it. So I've got the signed agreement in your packet and I looked out and the group was there that day and it was, it was in the single digits. They were there. I forgot that that was them. I said, who, I saw them with their boxes and everything. Who is that in the park? They were there. Okay, meeting with the sheriff's office holiday car break-ins. This is one of the bigger happenings over the last two weeks. There's more detail regarding the break-in investigation that the sheriff's office did. You can also find that online. But on top of that, I'd like to add that Lieutenant Bennett came to the office and spoke about their strategy, how they're going to try to catch the culprits and, and like everyone else, the sheriff's department is suffering from staffing and quarantine guidelines, but is still working hard to maintain public safety. He also wanted me to add, you know, his message to the public was that if you see something, say something. And, and really, Carol played a big role in this because he found tons of evidence on the Proctor parent Facebook page. So it was making it there, but it wasn't making it to the sheriff's office. So he's aware that that Facebook page exists now, but it's just important. Yeah, I think he did. I think he did. But, but it, but it is important that if you see something, say something and extend that past Facebook to the sheriff. And as much as I like to help, there's not much I can do. So, um, so I attended the V L C T's legislative preview session and we're talking more about that later on in the packet when we talk about town meeting, so I'll just move right on through. Again, Celia's out with her grandson, so the treasurer and town clerk won't be here this week, but the assistant town clerk is here. For, Vorak Grant Application Update. The grant winner announcement has been pushed back. And I quote from the state, "Due to the scale and complexity of the projects proposed this year, the committee is taking additional time to determine final recommendations," end quote. They will meet again on the seventeenth in hopes for a decision in mid-February, which is kind of a bummer because we thought we'd have something like this week. So got to wait a little bit longer. I'll update you if we get any questions. And then the last item on my manager's report is that the FY21 audit is here and is enclosed in your packet and always, I also plan to put it online. I've had a little bit of time to study it, so I could answer any questions while I can't, I probably couldn't answer any questions you have. I could, if you, if you really had one and you had to ask, I could maybe help you out. And if not, that's it.
All right. Any questions by anybody? Move on to discussion and action items. So everybody got the bills?
Yep.
Certificate of Highway Mileage needs a signature. Is that what I said?
Do we have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Do we all need designer or just you?
Um, we all, you all did.
Yeah, I said just chair here, but everybody does.
Yeah.
My mistake.
I did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I sure did.
Huh? Oh. Okay. Okay. Sheriff's report?
They did take a lot of reports. They've dealt with a lot of residents here.
Yeah, I think ten.
No, I didn't realize there were so many in low patients.
And, you know, I'm sure there's some that didn't report.
Yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, they were doing police work over the week. They were using the bathroom here as their little bathroom station, I guess. So they were busy.
Yeah. Good. Well, they seem to be covering every spot in town kind of evenly. And they've had a little change in hours during this period, so they've been working on it.
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right. The Declaration of Inclusion.
Sounds fine to me.
Everybody read it? Looked at it?
Yeah, our lawyers said, you know, it was okay, so.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
If, do you have public comment? Do you have comment? Okay.
Yeah.
I kind of try to get this straight. Put some stuff down. Okay, so about this statement of inclusion, I'm not aware of any racism or discrimination from the town of Proctor governing body or department thereof. This proposed document implies guilt. There is a history of oppression from our local government. Please enlighten me. What could necessitate adopting and implementing such a drastic strategy which appears itself to be searching for a crime? On the contrary, I've seen members of this governing body or the previously existing members to go out of their way to protect minorities at personal risk and cost to the town. Discrimination is illegal, so why go this route and make certain discrimination legal? I'm referring to the equity and the action items that they want to implement. If this governing body discriminated as inferred by this project, they would all be jailed and suffer the consequences as Vermont officials are under an oath of allegiance and an oath of office. And Vermont is one of the few states that has very enhanced discrimination laws. It's offensive to me seeing the overt racism of minorities being used as political pawns for a largest, for a larger Marxist agenda by political opportunists masquerading as crusaders while falsely labeling others as racist. Though Google might not participate in helping you search, we have at our disposal history as a guide unless we want to repeat mistakes. And data shows conclusively that healthy societies never stem from government or legislation. It is the opposite. Healthy societies are directly proportional to the amount of freedom that the populace enjoys, and that means non-invasive government. Equity, the blatant logical fallacy, because racism, you must adopt and implement racist strategies. This document seeks to imply guilt upon and then impose will upon people unfairly because of unfairness. The logical fallacy might work in grade school, but hopefully that won't be the case here. I was hoping. Through equity, shall we preemptively here make this being searched for a crime right through tyrannical equity legislation that follows this? It's opening, it's opening the door for it. And, and this promises everyone that two wrongs actually make a right. Two wrongs make a right. What does that teach our children? That type of logic is damaging to adults. They claim that equity makes things better somehow, but when is it ever? They wish to impose equity. Equity was that. It means forced redistribution using state violence to thief from people who earned something while promising to give it to someone else for free based on race or similar, similar minority factors. Often this means giving the jobs of the least qualif, giving jobs to the least qualified people, which results in intentionally broken systems. Equity may sound nice in the brochure, like that timeshare, but we see what happens to countries that employ equity. It's not something new. Equity is not ethical or moral. It is a communist tool designed to destroy everything functioning in a society in order to make the area ripe for communism. One thing for sure, where you find equity, you will find the most destitute of peoples with the most corrupt of governments. Summary, nobody should be given rights or privilege based on skin color or sexual preferences. It's always a trap to divide and conquer and there are hundreds of millions of dead people from just over the last century serving as proof and they're looking down here right now. And I don't want to do anything that paves the way for this equity legislation and there's no need for this type of declaration from this town. I request a motion not to consider this resolution at this time. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on the board that is in agreement and wants to change their motion to approve this?
No.
I have a whole page. I edited down just a little bit.
Okay.
Really tiny. We don't need to make a public declaration about how we treat people in Proctor. Our business here is to run the town, not to declare how Proctor's citizens feel about divisive, hot-button social issues. I respectfully ask the Select Board to reject this proposal.
Thank you. Okay, and I just want to say in terms of the Declaration of Inclusion, it's basically just saying that we are a community that is inclusive. We welcome everybody and we're just making a statement on it. We're not, you know, trying to pass law.
What they want to do is to say this and then also enact legislation as part of the plan. Did you read the implementation?
Right, but it's just basically, we're on board with, you know, agreeing to be good neighbors. I think that's what it comes down to, so. And I think the board has made a motion to approve it. Any changes?
No, the, the town has always been, this was a, a town that was extremely diverse years ago and this is just going a little further and I don't think, I don't see why it's going to lead us down another road.
All right, so there was a motion to approve and there was a second. You get the, you didn't, okay.
There's two seconds.
There was a, who seconded it? Who would second it?
Ben made it. But there wasn't a second.
Okay. Okay. Bruce, you seconded it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Declaration of Inclusion is passed. Okay. Draft warning for marijuana retail.
Madam Chair, I didn't hear a, a request for no votes. Was it, was it unanimous?
He's asking if it was unanimous.
Right, yes.
Yes.
We have, we have.
Sorry, the board, yes.
We have one member absent tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Draft warning for marijuana retail. We tabled this last time and I think Michael sent out some verbiage that we would just vote on tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So is everybody okay with putting this on the ballot?
Yes, let the voters decide.
Let the voters decide. If they want to vote or not. Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to put this on the ballot?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
The Declaration of Alternative Procedures for Town Meeting.
You blended them. Oh, yeah. Ninety percent of the page. Why did I miss it?
Yeah, it's a big one.
Okay. So is there discussion on that? Do we want to do Australian ballot? Hold town meeting, push off? Town meeting to a later date because of COVID?
I think Australian ballot would be good. Keep us on schedule. Yes, our numbers are going up in the state unfortunately here.
And town meeting is not that far away.
No.
No.
No, when it ended, the winter, we're all stuck indoors and it's the worst time.
So would you rather have a Zoom meeting like we did last year?
Is that what you did for the informational?
It was an informational meeting, yeah. It wasn't a town meeting, but.
Yeah. It was in lieu of a town meeting.
That, that works.
It was an information meeting. We didn't have a town meeting.
If people can stand in line to get COVID tested, we can have a town meeting.
Well, I, I disagree. I don't think we need to.
How much risk are people going to be at if we get together for a town meeting? Is everybody going to die? I don't think we've seen anybody die since this whole thing started at that.
Well, not that I'm aware, no, but I would rather be safe than sorry. You know, we'll have an informational meeting, questions and answers.
You can, you can hold up, we're doing a hybrid meeting, so it would be simple to, we, the board will be at central office and if people want the condom, they can come there, they have to wear masks. But you also have the option to join the group meetings. I mean, because the option is hybrid, only online or only virtual or a town meeting.
I mean, I think if we went like to the school and we were all there and anybody who wanted to come, then we'd have to sell this up.
Yeah, that's why we're doing it at central office, because actually this year is Proctor's year to have, because we moved from school to school. So we opted because all of this is already set up at central office, we would have to move to the gym as well. So, and we don't know like what is going to be the status in the school at that moment either. So the school at some point could say, even if you chose to have a town meeting based on, and I'm sure Ben could speak to this, if our numbers are high, the school could say, you're not allowed, we're not going to have you be in, in the building. Hopefully that the numbers are going down, but even just having people in the vote, I mean, that's still additional bodies in our building in the way we have it set up currently to eat in the gym and to all kinds of things that we haven't changed.
And we actually went remote last year during balloting because people were going to be in the building, so.
Right, yeah.
And I don't think putting off town meeting to a later date is, is, you know, going to work because we don't know from March to June how different COVID numbers are going to be. I don't think, you know, in a couple of months, I don't think it's going to drop drastically so we can open up town meeting and say, okay, it's much safer now than it was in March.
We'd have to do some changing with the money, I believe, too, if we weren't going to get our things approved until, you know, two months, two months later.
A real headache.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I can go either way because I'm fine with meeting in person just because everybody meets everywhere else in person, so. Comment?
Yeah, some people are really concerned about sacred Vermont tradition that we've had since the seventeen hundreds getting destroyed by COVID. And the longer we put off meeting in person, the closer that becomes reality. So it's really what you want.
So just so you know, part of the bill that was passed says that we can't eliminate town meeting until we actually have a town meeting. So I was very happy to see that in, in that bill. Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody's trying to eliminate town meeting.
You're taking away the power of the people, though. You're eliminating, you're eliminating things that we can do to, to affect anything. And it's very troubling.
My, my vote is what's important.
I think it's huge risk of COVID, I'm tired of hearing it.
Well, um.
And it's not, that's not your fault. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just exasperated and I don't mean to like you.
Well, I think we're all sick of staying home and trying to.
It's not easy for, for us.
No.
My, my, my immune system is compromised, so I have to deal with this more than most people do. And I, and it's just, it's a fact of life, you know, we can all just sit in our houses or we can, we can go on play and, and I just don't trust the fact that this is being taken away. I don't think it's called for. I mean, I would be willing to stand outside and do a meeting outside even because it's that important, even if it's like twenty degrees, I could care less. I think it's just important.
Is there anybody online that has any comment? Toby wants to talk.
I think he was here for the declaration.
Okay, all right. I couldn't tell if he was waiting in.
Because the time is seven thirty, seven fifty.
Oh, yeah. That's how long we.
So is there a decision?
I would rather see us do what we did last year, have the informational meeting, let people go and vote, you know, informational meeting, we can answer any questions. And I don't see any need to set this all up and then have the school say, you know, our numbers are high, we don't want you to use the gym. And then what do we do?
Last one.
Just to be fair, I heard you write pretty intensely about having to deal with the people face-to-face at these meetings and I'm not so sure that you're not just trying.
Well, that's exactly what we're trying to do, not meet face-to-face and spread germs. That's exactly what we're trying to do.
Before COVID, I heard you complain very intensely about having to see the people of the town face-to-face at these meetings and that. and have to deal with, you know, kind of the.
That's, that's part of the job.
I know, but I've heard you complain intensely about it. Your feelings are very intense about that. You don't like that situation.
Well, I, I, you know, all right, I've made my point. We could argue about this all night, Philip.
So is there a, is there a motion to, is there, okay. Is there a motion to have a information meeting and then vote by Australian ballot? Rather than have whole town meeting in person?
I think logistically that makes the most sense, so I'll, I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Just for clarification, because you're using pretty broad terms. The information meeting is only going to be online.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, hybrid.
Well, hybrid is different. Hybrid means people could come here.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to mess it.
Oh, that's all right. No.
No, that's why I'm just saying that there are options.
We don't have the volume here for.
No, you can say 25 people. That, that's why I just want to make sure that what we're, what we're saying is what we're saying.
Right.
So Lisa, can I ask, is there gonna be a limit for the, um, school board meeting?
Or not, because I don't think that we'll have that many. In our room, actually, there was a bigger and, um, only three board members historically out on the park in physical location. But because we're not under order of emergency, you have to have a physical location, I think.
Right.
We usually get pretty good turnout, though.
When we have a public meeting, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's why I'm just wanting to make sure that we're, what we're saying is what we're all saying. That you're saying, she's saying informational meeting, that the informational meeting, everybody's there, nobody's here, because that's hybrid meeting, like we're doing now.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Wait, so we would, we would also be on Zoom if we did it strictly as an informational?
Right, so you're, so when you say we're having informational meeting, it sounds like you're saying we're doing a strictly Zoom meeting. Nobody's here. Because what we're doing right now is a hybrid meeting.
Okay, I, I thought we were gonna do it the way we did last year. There wouldn't be anybody here.
Okay, I, I'm just, I just want to make sure.
Well, I, I want to make sure that the other members are happy with that.
Ooh, I'd prefer to be here.
Yes.
Rather than Zoom.
This is where the information is.
But if we can't be here without.
No, you would have to be here. I, it's my understanding, boards have to be in a physical place because we're not under.
Right, we're not under emergency order.
State of emergency. There has to be a physical location. The question is, are you going to allow the public to be here or are you just going to be here?
I think just we're gonna be here and they will be on there. Is that correct?
That was my impression, yes.
So a Zoom informational meeting.
Well, well, you want to be careful with Zoom because the, the language, I think, says electronically, which may allow for phones and stuff.
So the board will be present physically and everyone else will be electronically. Correct?
Yes, that's the way I understood it.
All right.
And it, it did work pretty well last year in, you know, in a pandemic, I thought.
But we can't really exercise a lot of the rights we have.
There will be no discussion of.
You can ask all the questions you want. I mean, what, what else do we do at that meeting? Well, you can, you can fight on Zoom.
We can open up things before for legislation and things like that. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do. I'm reading over these rules and there's a lot of options we have as the town people to make changes.
You can't introduce anything during town meeting that isn't on the warning. You could, you could request that it be put on the warning for next year, but you can't just add an extra thing.
Oh, no, I'm not sorry about that, but I'm talking about the effect that's on the warning.
Rewriting things. Like make an amendment.
Make an amendment, okay.
Votes, show hands, stands like that, yeah.
So we'll go and vote on paper, which is way better in my opinion.
Because.
Than standing around counting hands. Then the hands change.
Well, I've seen people cast votes and have that change too, so.
Never, not a paper ballot, not in this town.
Okay, good.
Never, never happened. Never happened. And I resent the fact that you said that the voting is being cheated.
Okay, so Lisa, you got all that?
So you're gonna have an electronic informational meeting and we'll vote by Australian ballot if people can still request, um, absentee ballots under this.
Yes, that is the other point, is that.
Right, but you're not going to send out.
We're not gonna mail it to everybody.
Right, no.
Anything like that. It's people's responsibility this year to come to request. But just so people know that if they want an Australian ballot, just like any other year, you can request it. Otherwise, we'll vote at the high school gym.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, you would probably go vote by absentee ballots, June.
Yeah, we'd want to probably include the town clerk in that conversation as well.
Okay.
The town clerk.
All right. Is there any other comment, questions? All right. Is there a motion to go into the executive session?
So moved.
To discuss labor relations agreements with employees in accordance with 1 VSA subsection 313A1B.